Welcome, everybody. It is Monday, September 8th. It is 6:05. I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Present.
Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
Our first presenter tonight is Nick Ballard. He's the Acting Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, and this is in the Public Works and Parks Committee. The chairman is Councilmember Hotchkiss, and this is RL 25-139, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
So, we're looking at RL 125-139, a resolution to accept a grant for Broom County through New York State Swims. Do you want to give us a quick overview? This grant?
We actually got to turn this one over to Recreation Supervisor Jake. He's the one that did it, so he'll know more.
Thank you. Jake.
Hello. Sorry. We put in for this last year. The state kind of took a little bit of time to get it back to us, so we put in for April of last year, I believe, and we just got it back in August of this year. But it's a grant to, it was to incentivize application of lifeguards. Getting in August kind of delayed that a little bit. We need our lifeguards in April. So, this is just to backtrack that, but the grant covered their certification costs for this year and this year only, and also gave them an employment incentive. So if they applied by a certain date on time with everything in line with their paperwork and certifications and ordinance, they would receive a hundred dollar bonus on their paycheck. So, we closed that all out, and so this is just to accept the money from the county through the state.
Were you able to offer the reimbursement in April during the hiring process, even though it was, there was the lag?
Yes, we got like the approval from the county, but they didn't get the contract to us because they, this is state money through the county. So this county had to wait for the state to get it approved, and then the state, the county had to then approve it to send us the contract.
That sounds fun.
Yes.
Do you anticipate the same lag next spring?
This was only a one-year grant, as far as I'm aware, so we have not applied for anything similar for this year.
Does anybody have anything else?
Just a question. Do you plan on, is there another grant out there like this? Do you plan on applying to it if there is another one?
Not that we are aware of yet. The state hasn't put out a second round of initiatives or anything of such. This was through, this is a second part with Governor Hochul's New York Swims Initiative, like with the Rec Park Pool Debt Grant. This was something else, the secondary action of that. So she was trying to do infrastructure for aquatics, and then this was also to invest in aquatic staffing. So they haven't announced to do a second round, but they could. It was a very quick grant that she had put out. I mean, it was, I think she had announced it in March of 20, and they are already taking applications in April of 24, 2024. So it was a very quick grant, so that she could surprise, pull out another 150 million and put another grant. Yeah, we hope.
Do you think it helped with recruitment and retention?
It definitely, after we had announced, because we were waiting for the county to let us know that it was approved, after I had sent that out to our returning staff, we saw a quicker uptick. Usually our lifeguards drag their feet, though, in application, so they'll always wait till the last day to get the applications in. But once that came through, that their certification cost was to be covered, it kind of gave them a little kind of push-through.
Anyone else have any other questions? So I did see on this that it has been requested for expedition.
I can make the motion to expedite.
I have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Jacob, thank you for all the hard work you've put into the city. From my understanding, this will probably be the last time we get to see you. So, thank you for all that you've done for the city.
Thank you, guys.
So next is RL 25-143. Nick Ballard's still our presenter. Nate Hotchkiss is still the committee chair, and it's in Public Works and Parks. Take it over, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Looking at RL 25-143, an ordinance to accept reimbursement for 18 Eldridge Capital Abatement Project. What happened with this one?
So this was associated with a violation from Pesh with our 18 Eldridge Park scratch. Had multiple heaving spots in the floors, uneven everywhere. So it actually was a blessing. So, yeah, we went through with it, and we actually had the money to fix the floor anyway, so it kind of worked out in our favor. And there was, we were able to apply for up to 70% or 75% reimbursement, and we went ahead and applied for that, and the state followed through, so.
I was kind of guessing that being in emergency because it was DOL violations is why it didn't go out to bid and why Smith was just to pick the contract.
Yeah, yeah, it was very time. We had to get it done.
Yeah, I understand.
So I'm not familiar with this particular program. Is this program and money that was available because it was so dire? That, or is this, it was just unrelated, and we were able to apply for this funding?
Nope. This was a violation that we followed through with, and through our, actually the inspector, he helped us out, and he's like, you can apply for...
It's this capital abatement program, which I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, so I'm...
Oh, this is like the Department of Labor. It's kind of like OSHA, Pesh.
No, no, the DOL, yes, but I'm talking about the actual funds for, that we secured through the state. That avenue was...
The money that's coming back or the money that we use?
No, the money that's coming back.
The reimbursement opportunity, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had kind of a similar question. I just, I mean, it seems like a great opportunity. I just wasn't aware that it was an option.
I wasn't either, but they informed me, so I filled out the paperwork, and here we are. We're getting some money back.
I mean, it's a good thing. All right, I'll just...
No one's complaining.
No one's complaining, right. But I'll just, yeah. I was just curious about it. I'll look into it elsewhere. Thanks.
Did it fix more than the floors? I'm trying to remember. I feel like there was like some mold issues and stuff in there when I viewed it.
It helped it a lot. Like, we got rid of, you know, a lot of the, we had pigeon problems in there. That kind of helped with that. It helped with a lot of stuff. There was a lot of housekeeping involved also with this, so, yeah, really. You should go in there now. It's a lot easier.
I'm sure I will. I remember, I had a constituent who worked in there, and I couldn't believe what they were telling me, and they were like, come on by, let me show you. And I was like, wow, that is precisely as bad as you have told me.
Yeah. Well, we're in and out of there all day long with tractors and, you know, equipment, so, you know, you...
And there'd been water issues, right? It flood, didn't it flood into it a bit?
It did flood a little bit. When it rained real hard, it would come back, it would back up in there. So they fixed that. We put new drainage in as well, so everything goes right in.
Sounds like a blessing.
Yeah, 100%.
Thank you.
Was all the violations weight from DOL that they marked in their, in their notice of violation in order to comply? Once everything was complied, we didn't know any fines to DOL for that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Is anyone else? Hearing done. Thank you so much, Nick. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Next is RL 25-142. Our presenter is Sarah Gloss, Director of Economic Development. This is in the Planning Committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you. As our presenters are coming down, I'll represent, this is an ordinance authorizing the sale of 25 Lydia Street, 29 Lydia Street, 60 Dickinson Street, and 199 Murray Street to Community Asset Preservation Corporation for $1 each. And this is under the New York State Block-by-Block Home Ownership Program?
Yes. So I'm just going to tee things off, and then I'm going to pass it over to my colleagues from CAPC. As Councilmember Rathmo mentioned, this is, there's an offer to purchase submitted by CAPC for the four lots, 199 Murray Street, 60 Dickinson Street, 25 Lydia Street, and 29 Lydia Street. Just for a little bit of context, in the 2024-2025 budget, Governor Hochul authorized funding for the Block-by-Block Infill Program. It's a program designed to construct homeownership opportunities in infill locations, which is primarily vacant lots that exist within otherwise stable or mostly stable neighborhoods. That funding does not require any interaction from the city. Any nonprofit developer can purchase or otherwise acquire a vacant lot and access these funds through homes and community renewal. Seeing that we did not have any interest when this first launched in 2024, in early 2025, we took the initiative to identify clusters of properties. That is one thing that is preferred by Homes Community Renewal as part of this program, is to have properties that are kind of in the same neighborhood to have the most catalytic impact possible. As a result of those conversations, or as a result of that call for developers, I had seven intake calls that resulted in three developers being interested, CAPC being the first of hopefully three block-by-block proposals that we'll be bringing forward to this body at some point in the next few months. So I'm going to let them speak about their experience, but wanted to make sure if there were any questions about the program or the city's involvement at this time, that I can answer those before I turned it over.
I do, and you answered some of my initial question in terms of whether or not. So I understand CAPC has projects in Endicott Vestal, which I respect, are there, in those three responses that you received, are there local conversations that you're having with brokerage firms, developers within the county that have experience and are interested as well?
Yes. So I'll take that question in two parts. In my initial intake conversations, I had good interest from folks that had projects directly in the city of Binghamton and in broader Broom County. Of the three that have advanced and have indicated an interest to advance, it's CAPC, a firm out of Syracuse, and a firm that works in Broom County but has not worked in the city of Binghamton. I just don't want to represent on their behalf those, but I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline. But we did make this available. I will say, it's kind of a tricky funding source. These folks can probably speak a little bit more about the challenges of the 30-year soft second mortgage and other restrictions that HCR has put in place that have made it a little bit tricky for some of the smaller firms, newer firms, firms with less capacity to actually take advantage of these funds. I know there's advocacy efforts happening across the state to modify some of those, but to my knowledge, they have not been modified to this point. So that has, it's kind of been a limiting factor.
Would the, so in the executive summary, these homes will be sold to qualified buyers with both funding and regulatory oversight provided through the program? Is the expectation that the firms or developers who are coming through with interest and pushing projects forward are taking on the administrative burden of the regulatory oversight?
Yes. Like I said, this funding doesn't have, doesn't need to have any involvement from the city, so really, we would just be facilitating the transfer of the properties because we have a high touch on all of our housing projects, and because we've developed a relationship with CAPC, I anticipate that we'll have more information than we might have than a nonprofit developer that comes in and does this on their own, but the city won't take on any additional administrative burden for the project.
Okay, last question, and then I promise y'all can come up. Is there any consideration municipally, so I understand there's no requirement or state expectation that the city assists with the overall regulatory burden? Has there been conversations, so in terms of what does present barriers to local, even smaller firms being interested or even kind of throwing their hat in the ring? Have there been internal conversations around developing that infrastructure to support?
Yes. I would say not necessarily developing it internally, but identifying partners that have that capacity. So for instance, the Community Preservation Corporation, which I know some of our local nonprofit developers have an active relationship with, has their access program. I'm in communication with Lawrence, who runs that program, about how we can potentially utilize that in the city of Binghamton. It really just becomes a capacity issue, and even though these programs are designed to kind of meet people where they're at, they do oftentimes still have minimum standards and requirements that they're going to ask those nonprofit developers to level up a little bit before they can even enter the program. So, not a perfect system, but yes, something that we are actively attuned to and working on. Any other questions on Block-by-Block before I turn it over?
Did you say what the status of the, you said there's three people that were interested in Block-by-Block, but there's, do we have an understanding of like where the application is with HCR?
So this is the first step. Getting some level of site control is what will enable folks to advance that next step with HCR. So no applications have been submitted to date, no.
Okay, thank you. So that means you have other clusters of properties identified for the other folks you're putting in the pipeline, so to speak.
We have clusters of properties identified that we're working with those developers to understand whether those make sense for their particular model. The stability of the neighborhood is the biggest question that developers have. Can we actually sell these? Will we be putting people into neighborhoods where they can successfully, you know, build equity in their home, have strong neighbors, kind of be part of an active neighborhood? So we're trying to navigate that. How do we do infill in areas of the city that maybe aren't as strong of neighborhoods, but working with the developers to understand kind of the limitations in the market on that?
Do you know when this project is planned to be started, like when everything is set to go?
I will defer to them on that, but I do believe it would, it would be at HCR's discretion how quickly they're able to process the applications. I know one of the other firms we're talking to has an active application in in Syracuse, which is why they have not submitted for us, and that's been a number of months in the process. So I'm unsure what exactly their timeline is, but extensive, given what I know about New York State.
And I see two of the properties, I think 60 Dickerson and 199 Murray, those are houses, correct?
No.
No, so it's next to it. So, okay, so it's over. Okay, because I was looking at it on my GPS, but it's over. So when it comes up, it looked, it's that house that's a property, but it's the next lot over. Is that what that is?
Yeah, and then if you look at the street view on the 10th slide of the packet, you'll see kind of the overview, and you can see exactly where they're located. Some of them look like they have trees, so they look kind of dense, but they are vacant properties.
Sarah, if I could just throw this on your radar, it's not a question, because I did promise I had no more questions before y'all came up. If I could just throw this on your radar, there's a cluster on South Side that wasn't identified in the original notice to potential nonprofits interested. I just want to throw on your radar that I'd love to follow up to talk about that potential cluster and its inclusion in the program.
Yes, and we did take one of the interested developers up to the South Side and looked at some properties, and I can talk about some of the challenges that they saw, mostly topographically and with connections to infrastructure, but yeah, absolutely. Great, I will turn it over to the team.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'll let, we want you to do something else.
Sure. I'm Ryan Johnson. I'm the Managing Director of Real Estate for CAPC. I've been there for five years now. Pleasure to be here, me and everybody.
I'm Danielle Rosen. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for the CAPC line of business. I've been with the organization about 12 and a half years, and I oversee all of our single-family development. And then our colleague Chris Giometto, who's our Director of Construction Services, is also here with us tonight. He has been with the organization about 11 years. So, start by talking just a little bit about ourselves. You know about the organization, and we'll talk a little bit more about the project that's our, kind of helped set the context on. So, Community Asset Preservation Corporation, we call ourselves CAPC, like a hat, and then C. We are a real estate subsidiary of New Jersey Community Capital, which is a 39-year-old community development financial institution. As an organization, we've done about, a little more than 1,000 loans and have $700 million in assets. The lending part of our business really focuses on a broad range of community development needs, so affordable housing, charter schools, childcare centers, small businesses. The Real Estate Subsidiary, which is the group that we represent, spun off in 2009 to directly address vacancy, blight, and abandonment in communities that were hit hardest by foreclosure in an effort to both stabilize those neighborhoods and increase the amount of affordable housing throughout the state. Since then, we've created or preserved a little over 2,800 units of primarily scattered site, single-family rental and-for-sale housing in New Jersey, in New York, and in Florida. We're going to spend most of our time tonight talking about our single-family work, but I did want to note that we are fully vertically-integrated organization. So we also, we work on multifamily and commercial development projects. We have construction management services, and we have homebuyer services as part of our kind of suite of services. As I mentioned, we've created or preserved 2,800 units of affordable housing nationally and 137 units in the state of New York. We're currently holding about 15% of that portfolio as rental properties in New Jersey and Florida, and the remaining homes have been sold primarily to owner occupants at or below just about 90% of the area median income. Just to give you a sense of kind of the work that we've done. We've worked in more than 250 municipalities, and we've been awarded and deployed more than $23 million in project subsidies. So if there are questions about the challenges of working with project subsidy, I'm happy to answer those as they, as they come up. Our approach to work, and specifically our approach to homeownership, really starts with local connections. We've worked with municipalities, local community groups, and residents to really fully understand the housing needs and existing pain points that could work towards future development. Our first connection with the city of Binghamton came in February of 2024. One of portfolio of properties was being foreclosed upon. We were looking at that opportunity. Since then, we've been looking for the right opportunity to work together, and we were really excited about the Block-by-Block program when it was announced. So we worked with local partners, local general contractors, local real estate agents to complete all of our work. For our New Jersey projects, in addition to the development work, we also have a suite of homeownership services. So we have a local real estate brokerage, and our agents are specialized in working with low and moderate income buyers and sellers. We have a homeownership preparation and housing counseling program and a down payment assistance program for those projects. So, tonight we're here to talk about the four lots that were, that were already mentioned. We are planning to build six units of affordable housing through the Block-by-Block program, which we spoke about. We're currently still finalizing our development, our design plan, and will obviously work within the Block-by-Block parameters. But we're really working to maximize the number of units and the affordability to the buyers. And so that, that may include looking at ADUs or additional units in each project. Block-by-Block allows up to two units to be built on a parcel for, and subsidy to be covered. And we're looking at other ways to offset our costs to then pass that savings off to the buyer. So that could include modular building strategies and different things of that nature, all that we have had experience with working in the past. The sites that we selected, we're talking about today, were specifically chosen because of their location. We thought that they were in areas that where homeownership could be successful and stable for the buyers. Within our current financial model, we are targeting, targeting list prices around $80,000 to $150,000 to the buyer, depending on how many units are in the, in the building, which, which would be affordable to a household around 45% of the county area median income, or about $45,000 a year. The Block-by-Block program does require homes to be affordable for households at 60% of AMI or lower, so we're well within that, well within that timeframe. The slide deck that you were given does have other examples of work we've completed that's similar, both in long-term affordable housing and housing that's new construction built in a, in a specific single geography. But I think I'm going to stop there and see if you all have any questions about us or what we're hoping to do.
Sure, I have a few. First, how did you find out about the city of Binghamton?
So we've been working in the state of New York since 2017, in a few of the other metro areas, and have done a few projects in Broom County. You know, the Block-by-Block program, when it came up, because of its targeted location, it was a good fit for us. But we've been, you know, we've been working with Sarah and her team since, for about a year and a half, so we've been aware of the opportunities here.
Yeah, I would just add, it was the Anzarut portfolio that we initially saw first, and then we got to know Sarah. I think a couple of things that we look at when we go to a community is just like from a standpoint of how, what are the bones of the community? So obviously, you have a big anchor in the university. We love working with the economic development team here. As Danny said, we've worked in 250 municipalities. You cannot do development if you don't have a government administration that's willing to help you, work with you, and provide information. The team here was great, and we saw a need when we came up. We look at the communities, you know, to sell a house for $150,000, to build it and sell it for that number is a big challenge. This program is perfect, because there's no other way that these houses could get built with this quality for those numbers without this program. So the program just made sense. The other thing Danny had mentioned was just about our subsidy work. So we work with a bunch of different subsidy programs, and we're comfortable with some of the restrictions that come, and we know what it takes for a nonprofit. Councilwoman, you had talked a little bit about partnering with local groups and getting them involved. That's what we do. So Chris does construction, so we normally go into communities, we're normally partnering with those local groups. Even if we're not developing for ourselves, we offer our construction management services or our residential brokerage.
Is that union-based?
No. I mean, our projects are mostly single-family homes, so we're not required to build with unions. We do have something in New Jersey called prevailing wave for some of the other projects that we do, so we are familiar with how that works. But we build within the restrictions and regulations of whatever the municipality requires, so we're comfortable either way.
So you wouldn't be using any local union at all, like from here, with that, with that you guys have your own company?
No, no, we would be using local contractors here.
Okay.
For sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure.
Ryan or Chris, how do you guys determine that? On what, your local contractors, do you guys send out letters? Because obviously, this being a private project, it won't go out for open bid.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Giometto. To answer your question, how do we determine, how do we determine, how do we source, right? How do we find them? Most of the time, it's through our initial connections and our initial connections within that municipality. In this particular case, we'd more than likely start, obviously, more than likely start here from City Hall, give initial recommendations, and then every time we're up here, we're constantly looking for new, you know, new partners. You know, most of it is word of mouth, and then we do an interview process.
Okay, because I know with other HCR projects that have gone around, gone on around Broom County, a lot of times you get a developer brings in all their own construction companies, whether it's the GC, subcontractors, and local workers don't really get much work on any of those projects.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that defeats, we've run into that scenario. We run into those challenges in the multiple states that we've been in. And like Danny said, you know, her and I have both been here, you know, between 11 and 12, 11 and 12 years, and the lion's share of those 2,800 units that were developed in that timeframe were directly, were directly underneath Danny and Danny myself. The only way that this ever works, and especially going anywhere that's, I personally live about two and a half hours from here. You know, most of my crews and most of the guys that work directly for us in the state of New Jersey don't, you know, aren't licensed in New York State. For us to work, you know, for us, for me to be operating projects and running projects in Florida and in other parts of New York State that I've done here, within our, you know, within my timeframe with our organization, it's all been local, it's all been a use of local contractors, local general contractors. If I need to have someone else there, you know, during, and I'm usually around at least, I would say at least once every two weeks, we'll have, maybe it's a local Realtor, local brokerage, another local representative that can be our eyes on the ground. We have software to be able to also work with and have our, and introduce to the local general contractors that we use as the project management, as project management software. But everything that we do is all with local-based contractors.
Chris, do you happen to have a card with you, so I can send an email and put you in touch with Frank Steno, who's the new president of the Binghamton-O'Niana Building Construction Trade Council? And that way, we can get you a list of local contractors?
That'd be great. That'd be 100% great.
So I have a quick question. It says that these properties will be sold to qualified buyers. And my apologies if this has already been discussed, or if it's in the... And my apologies if this has already been discussed or, or if it's in the supporting documents, but will there be expectation for like a time limit for, um, the properties to be occupied by the homeowners? And, and what's the time limit of that?
Yeah, so the subsidy does require a 30-year, um, deed restriction that where the properties have to be occupied by an owner occupant. That doesn't generally mean that the properties can't be sold during that time. It just restricts who the properties can be sold to. So that, well, sometimes it's called a soft second or a second mortgage, uh, is a 30-year time period. And that's, that's dictated by the subsidy source.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So on, on that topic, um, that requirement was, I think, one of the reasons why this was initially kind of slow uptake for organizations to get involved. So how, what, what has made CAPC different? How are you approaching that? How are you overcoming that, that, uh, inherency?
Yeah, 30 years is a long time for a deed restriction. It's not unheard of. It's not inconsistent with what we've seen in other communities, but it's, it's a long time, and it, it's something that buyers get nervous about. If you're buying a home for a first time, hearing about a 30-year deed restriction is, is scary.
And lenders too, correct? Yeah.
Right, absolutely, yeah. I'm, you know, what we have done that's been really successful in the past, we work really closely with local community groups and just make sure that we are educating everybody on what that means. It doesn't mean that you can't sell the house. It doesn't mean you can't make any improvements on the house. It doesn't mean you're going to be locked in there and your children are going to be locked in that purchase forever, but there is, there is an education component. We have worked with local community groups, local housing counseling organizations. We work with national groups that can be, you know, flexible as well and work with buyers. So really, we just focus on the education. You know, I think that the 30 years is not uncommon for subsidy like this, and so I think there's, there's a good precedent for, for in the past.
Who actually ends up doing the lending though on these?
It depends. Um, you know, some of the subsidies have a list of preferred lenders, a list of approved lenders. These deed restrictions are not as stringent. You know, we, we've done some, and I think one of the examples in your packet is, um, affordable, permanent affordable homeownership that we've done with a land bank, a land trust in New Jersey. That's a little bit of a more challenging transaction to swallow. You know, this is a, a forgivable 30-year soft second that doesn't require any payment. There are certainly restrictions, and we find that lenders want to know about them as soon as they can, but we haven't had much pushback in the variety of places that we've utilized, you know, restrictions like this for lenders to say, no, no, we won't do this at all.
I've, I, I would say I've appreciated the restriction in this and other programs because it does extend the affordability, uh, and that's truly what I think these programs are attempting to tackle. What's, I would say, most compelling to me about your portfolio is your work with the Essex Community Land Trust and in acknowledging that you're so based out of New Jersey expertise, certainly from New Jersey in rounding out that local partnership component. I think what I would really love to see locally is we do have a land trust locally, and they are interested in the Block by Block program, but those, those requirements, the restrictions, it's largely new to them. So I think if a transfer of that expertise and some technical assistance support that expands our local capacity to put forth additional projects that may not just be, you said CAPC, right? That may not just be limited to CAPC would, I, I think that, that then, I mean, that collaboration builds our local capacity to just branch out into, to potentially all the clusters that Sarah's department has identified.
Yeah, the work that we did with the Essex Community Land Trust, you know, we developed those properties and sold them into the land trust and to the buyer at the same time. So that was a little bit of a, I mean, it was, it was a relationship that we worked, we shared subsidy on as well. In the city of Orlando, we also worked a little bit more collaboratively with the land trust where we co-developed the properties and then made sure that they were sold to approved buyers. So that's a, a relationship we've taken in a lot of different directions and one that we're very comfortable with.
We need as many people doing this work as we can, bottom line.
I guess I, I would start out with, um, so the only role that we really have in this is, is selling you this land, um, or these, these parcels. Uh, in the event that your, um, application doesn't get approved through HCR, what, what happens if you're now the owner of these, but you don't have?
We won't transfer the properties until they get the HCR subsidy.
Okay.
There are also, and just, just to mention, thank you, Sarah, there, there are other, other subsidy programs that HCR has available that we're looking at as well. Block by Block is just the most, most recent and a particularly innovative one that's focused on, you know, the select geographies that it, but there are other programs that we have identified and are comfortable working with if, you know, if needed.
So without getting into too much detail or, or putting cart before the horse, um, you've, you folks mentioned ADUs in, uh, the, uh, overview. How critical are ADUs to the design and success of, of these, of this type of, of development? Or in this particular case, or, and if we're not there yet, just?
It's an option we're looking at, as I mentioned, to, to increase affordability. You know, ADUs, the rent on an ADU will cover most of a household's mortgage, and so that really allows us to dig deeper to the affordability. We are looking at kind of what is the, the construction cost, um, variable there, and so it certainly won't work on every lot, but for the lots where it can, we're, we're looking at it as an option.
You, you have the, you have the blessing of having such big lots here. Uh, we want to maximize it as much as we can, as Danny said, that will definitely help the homeowner. So your, your lots are huge. I'm telling you, it's great.
And actually, some of your lots are under our normal minimum width already, but yeah.
We're, we're used to 25 by 100.
I guess, um, uh, along the same line of, uh, questions around ADUs is of the, like, 250, um, municipalities, have there any, have there been like restrictions in whether or not you could build an ADU that you ran into previously?
So, you know, I think that we, we have been thinking about, um, ADUs is like a, a newer concept, but it's not really a newer concept, right? So we've, we've built probably most of our portfolio has been two and three family homes, which is really an attached ADU is like a two-family home. We certainly have had municipalities that have pushed back on development for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, one of the things that, that we think is really unique about our work is because we're doing primarily infill, and we've worked in so many different municipalities, we're not necessarily going into one place and saying, we're going to build 300 units with 300 ADUs, right? We're not saturating the market in that way. And so I think we, we generally get the support that's needed, you know, mo, in most instances, development is as a right. Um, but if it's not, I think we, we have had a pretty good success getting the support that we need to build.
100% accurate. I, I think here, what, one of the driving thoughts here were, certainly wasn't the what, the, the lot widths, right? You know, to your point, but it's the depths of the lot. You know, we're talking about, you know, one of the lots, I think the, yeah, the Dickinson lot is 180 feet, um, deep. So, you know, trying to figure out, okay, how do we maximize this, create an opportunity for the homebuyer, uh, you know, there to offset the, their, obviously their normal costs? And how, you know, can we do this within the parameters of this program where we can still make it affordable? The, the overall answer may end up being no, but the options on the table, I think we can. So it's, you know, it's to be determined, you know, so far.
I mean, I, so I bring this up because last year, we, I believe it was last year, we updated our, our zoning to include a definition for ADUs, um, specifically that they would be attached only. Um, and right now I have, I'm working on making it so they can also be detached and we can build them. And I know it seems like counterintuitive because on Dickinson Street, there's an ADU on the lot already, but the, as far as our charter is concerned, there's still, it's still, um, restricting that type of detached development, I believe.
Can I just offer a little bit of clarification? That's only in the R1. This, the ADUs are allowed in, in this zoning district that's shown here. The R2 and the R3 does allow detached. It's just the R2 can be two units, one single-family home, one detached ADU or a two-family, and then the R3 can have the, have more units on it. So the R1 is the only district that has a restriction on detached ADUs.
Okay. Forget that, never mind.
Don't, that's what I work with.
With the, um, with the 30-year deed restriction, uh, that, I'm certainly going to potentially restrict sort of the possible purchase price appreciation going to whoever the buyer is. So it, 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 it cuts down on the, that possible accumulator of, of, of family wealth and stability. So I think the possibility of ADU where you're, you're at least giving income to cover most of a mortgage is, is kind of offsetting that handicap to, to, to the program. So I, I think we should push when possible.
The only thing I would say too is we hope that this will spur other development in the neighborhood as well too, right? And, and that, that is the goal, to use this subsidy program to get everything around us moving. So we definitely understand the deed restriction, but again, um, hopefully this can be the domino to help move what's already going here.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Uh, any projects of yours within reasonable driving distance for an afternoon drive? So we can actually go see a few things? I love a good field trip.
Didn't you say Endicott and Vestal? Okay.
You, you can get back to me later.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I think, yeah, in Albany and Schenectady area, we had, we had a handful, uh, that have since, that have since sold. But yeah, we, we can, we can always get back to see. I think that's probably the most recent closes, right?
Right, yeah, most recent, probably.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
You're all welcome to come down to New Jersey. I mean, I got a whole bunch going on down there.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
I'm just going to add one thing, which is that I said this doesn't need Seeker. I do believe it does need Seeker, so I apologize for that mistake on the RL.
All right, our next presenter is Councilmember Rebecca Rathmill. This is RL 25-144. It is in the Finance Committee, and I'll hand it over to the Committee Chair, Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Being presented by Councilman Rathmill, uh, it's a resolution, um, authorizing transfer from the, uh, fund balance to the general fund to fund, uh, chair on equipment for Binghamton Fire Department. So would you like to give us an overview of the proposal?
Thank you, Councilmember Kavanaugh. Uh, so this is a general fund transfer request for the purchase of firefighter equipment. It follows the council's rejection during our last business, business meeting of the mayor's request in June to use community development block grant funding to cover the expense represented. Uh, for members who voted or spoke against accessing unspent CDBG dollars, I think our reasoning was pretty simple. The turnout gear is a critical need in order to maintain the fire department's compliance with National Fire Protection Association regulations, but CDBG was not the appropriate source. The community development block grant program was established by HUD for the primary purpose of creating and preserving affordable housing in low-income neighborhoods. Though fire protection equipment is technically eligible under the public's facilities and improvements category of the program, the Binghamton Firefighters Association and the Binghamton Fire Department have not previously been offered the use of CDBG dollars because other budget mechanisms exist. Specifically, the city's general fund, like every municipal general fund, is designed to cover essential services when unexpected expenditures or budget shortfalls come up. And one of the most common uses of any general fund is public safety. Um, you'll notice I included a snapshot in the supporting materials from the city's comptroller, the city comptroller's 2024 annual financial report to the state. It represents over $13 million in our general fund balance, um, very healthy by anyone's standards. Six transfers from our general fund, which were introduced by various city departments, including the mayor's office, have already been approved this year, averaging about $101,000 each, and in support of requests ranging from arts parks design to a new storm pump line. And I believe it is the most appropriate source for the fire department equipment needs, thus I'm proposing this transfer in support of that request.
Well, I have to say, Councilmember Rathmill, thank you so much for, in a two weeks' time period, you came up with a way to make sure that the Binghamton Fire Department is being taken care of, because that was definitely not the narrative as we, uh, had our differences and how we should have voted and how that money should have been spent from the mayor's office. But, I mean, there's a word that was mentioned to me when I was talking about how, uh, sometimes I feel city hall is ran and the word's mismanagement. That, that seems to come across more and more often with people I talk, and the fact that we could have used the general fund instead of that going to the CDBG to be just the, the nightmare it was to, to the community that doesn't sit in on these meetings, doesn't know everything that goes on in these meetings. All they see is the flashy headline, but it's like it was a mismanagement of, they just found those funds versus actually utilizing the general fund or even applying for grants like they should. So I commend you and I thank you for putting in that work over the last two weeks.
I appreciate that, and I certainly did not do it alone. I mean, I've had several conversations with other members, community members, as well as the president of the, uh, Firefighters Association, so I can't take all of that credit. But I think, to your point in terms of mismanagement, I mean, I would remind, I don't think this body needs any reminding, but for those listening, when the mayor's office introduced the legislation in June to use almost $400,000 of unspent community development block grant funding, it was entirely new information to this council that that many unspent CDBG dollars existed. And then what we discovered in the weeks that followed, only after demanding a full report of unspent and available CDBG accounts, was that in fact, more than $700,000 in CDBG funding, which again, is issued to municipalities for the primary purpose of creating and preserving safe, affordable housing, had been left simply to accrue over the last six years. So I think mismanagement, Council President Dundon absolutely represents not only allowing this administration allowing that funding to sit and accrue rather than being spent, but turning to it immediately for this need as opposed to finding another budget mechanism that was more appropriate so that CDBG could be allocated appropriately.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Well, seeing that this was required, requested to be expedited, can I get a motion to expedite?
Make a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call for expedition?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodgkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is 7-0.
So moving on, I noticed there's actually a little typo on our work session agenda since Councilmember Rathmill will be presenting RL 25-41. I don't think it's appropriate for her to be chairing the committee during her presenting, so I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Hodgkiss, who sits on the planning committee as Councilmember Rathmill presents the next RL.
Thank you. So we're moving on to RL 25-145, an ordinance to amend the 2025 FY50 CDBG budget to create an affordable housing development modernization fund. Do you want to give us an overview, Councilmember Rathmill?
Sure, thank you. Um, so with that unused funding in mind, this legislation proposes the creation of an affordable housing development modernization fund. Per Chapter 410 of our city charter, affordable housing is defined as a dwelling unit that's restricted by regulatory agreement to provide occupancy to low-income households. And according to Broom County's 2024 Housing Needs Assessment, there are 35 affordable housing developments throughout the city of Binghamton that comprise a total of 2,400 units. The average year built for those buildings is 1981, with several dating back to the early and mid 1900s. with several dating back to the early and mid 1900s and in need of critical upgrades. With persistent shortfalls in funding for capital repairs from the federal level for affordable housing and public, um, and subsidized housing, this fund would be reserved for eligible rehabilitation activities to address health, safety and quality of life deficiencies identified on affordable housing sites built prior to 1985. In recent weeks, tenants from the Binghamton Housing Authority and Woodburn Court One, both sites eligible under this proposal have shared long lists of building conditions in need of repair or remediation with council members. Uh, and instead of continuing to allow properties to simply deteriorate to the point at which a full gut renovation is required, like what we're seeing in the $65 million RAD project underway, underway at Saratoga Heights. The goal here would be to rehabilitate these developments in order to preserve our existing affordable housing stock and ensure the continued health and safety of the tenants who live in it.
Anyone have any questions?
I think there's some additional context that I would like to provide. I'm not asking myself my own questions, but there's some more content that I'm happy to kind of just push forward. There are typically two things in discussing with the, um, this administration, the use of community development block grant dollars. One that has come up frequently has been a timeliness concern in terms of the spending down of available funding. I will say, I think it's a bit disingenuous for Mayor Cram to represent timeliness concerns, given that he is the reason that 700-plus thousand dollars have accrued in the last several years. However, I do think it's true that we've observed threats of rescission during this year's federal budget deliberations and should keep them in mind in terms of timeliness when spending down federal dollars. Within community development block grant funding specifically, however, there are very detailed rules within HUD regulations about timeliness, uh, very specific to a date. So grantees aren't supposed to have more than one and a half times their annual allocation 60 days prior to the end of each program year. For us in the city of Binghamton, our program year ends August 31st. So HUD would be looking in terms of timeliness for a May 31st deadline for that 1.5 times amount. So we're either talking about the general federal budget and political climate concerns regarding clawback, um, which shouldn't be disregarded, but aren't necessarily immediately urgent. Or we would be discussing whether or not HUD has notified the city of Binghamton that there's a timeliness concern. And in other finance committee meetings, I would just point out, we did discuss timeliness. I believe it was the June 24th Finance Committee meeting with both Mayor Cram and Director Burling. And neither of them at that time reported correspondence from HUD that had actually been received noting that, that any of the concerns were at immediate risk. Um, so all of that to say, uh, unless that information is being kept from us as well, uh, which could be possible. Um, while timeliness does need to be top of mind, I am not aware of an immediate deadline that HUD has given us to ensure that we're not risking a clawback. Um, the other piece that this administration has repeatedly, repeatedly brought up when it comes to the spending down of community development block grant funding is how challenging reporting requirements can be. And we actually touched on this a little bit with CAPC. Um, so the record, the reporting requirements for federal CDBG or home funding, again, frequently cited as a barrier to spending down these dollars. For years now, though, it's been raised, um, both within the administration, within the planning department as a challenge. And I would say instead of taking the opportunity that I think is in front of us with acknowledging that barrier to establish an infrastructure within program operations that assumes aspects of navigating that administrative burden or assists applicants in the files and records that have to be maintained. This is another example, in my opinion, of mismanagement. So instead of, so we've acknowledged a barrier, but we've not built up any infrastructure around assisting potential applicants and navigating those barriers. And we've just allowed it to accrue. And I would say at times even worse, this administration has placed additional requirements on applicants like what we've seen with Southern Door Community Land Trust ARPA agreement that make accessing the funds even more difficult. So that is again, frequently cited, but I'd say it's more of a failure of leadership, not an insurmountable operational deficiency.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, uh, just between this and the next ordinance. Both of you mentioned the financial year 50 CPG budget. Is it specifically for financial year CDBG or financial year 50, or is it sort of all of that?
It, it should, it is, it's, it's a problem with the RL.
Okay. I just wanted to.
You, you need to refer back to the funding lines from the previous years that you're actually targeting.
It would be from 45 through 48 primarily. So that, that would be my error in the RL for just like blanket notifying CDBG 50.
Just so some, there might be some organizations that are like, where's the money going?
Yep. So we should be looking at, um, 45 to 48. There is a significant amount that's still not unspent for 49. Um, but I imagine that, I mean, we still have time to spend that down. I think what I would, and the reason this was submitted more in draft form, even though we got a report from the comptroller in late June, identify like full accounting of CDBG. I would say there is a discrepancy. I reached out to, um, a colleague with ex municipal financial accounting expertise within the, the sector. And there's a discrepancy between kind of what I would say the report represented and kind of those tabulations. So I think it would be fair, I want to represent, I will need, I think we will need, if this moves to committee, to bring our comptroller in just to confirm unspent available funds from 45 to 48, because I actually, the number I'm working with is 813,000 um, as opposed to just 700,000. Um, so I think there's a little bit of calibrating that, and again, that's because we were not given access to any of the reports or financial accounts until literally late June. So I mean, all of this has come, I think, I mean, and, and this is where I would extend my appreciation to council members, a number of whom I've discussed these potential programs with. The difference between this funding sitting there for six years and this council having a month and a half to consider in light of timeliness concerns, but also very critical affordable housing needs locally, how to appropriately spend this money. I mean, that's if we had an administration that was committed to collaboration rather than one that just throws resolutions out and hopes we don't have the time to figure out alternatives. We could be doing so much more for the city to meet critical needs. Um, and that is, I'll, I'll just say that's a personal point of frustration.
Does anyone else have anything? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Yeah. Is it, so who do you picture is administering these funds? Or how do we, how do, how does one apply?
Sure. So I think next steps for this, if it moves to committee, would be bringing in both our comptroller as well as our planning department folks. But in terms of potential applicants, we would be looking at those 35 affordable housing developments. Um, those complexes and then only, uh, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number, but there's a portion of that 35 that are built prior to 1985. So I think we could very, not only swiftly, but, uh, clearly request um, project needs from those complexes. In terms of reporting requirements, a good number of the administrative burden, so these are subsidized complexes that already have income limit restrictions in their operational protocol. And so the eligibility determinations that can be a difficult record-keeping requirement for new applicants often are actually already largely built into many of these complexes, tenant screening criteria. Um, so I think it becomes just identifying um, which of those complexes have more immediate health. I mean, 250,000 is a good chunk of money, but it's not going to fix all of the modernization needs of all of these complexes. Uh, unfortunately far from it. Um, but I think it gives us some wiggle room to start to address what might be more immediate health and safety concerns, um, for complexes that, and there's no shortage, I, I mentioned, I mean, we have uh, it was, I want to say August 25th, that Binghamton Housing Authority tenants went public with a petition identifying dozens of deficiencies within complexes on Binghamton Housing Authority sites. To my knowledge, they've neither received a response from Binghamton Housing Authority's board or the executive director or the mayor. And I feel like we have an opportunity as a responsive and engaged body to not only engage with those complexes, but making sure that it's a, it's a resident-driven conversation as well.
So you need this in?
Absolutely.
Do you want to send this to committee?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to, um, move RL 25-145 to the planning committee meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, can I do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero. We left?
We didn't need the motion, but.
For the record, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it helps with transparency and clarity to people who are watching, who are thinking, how long is this going to take or what's going to happen next?
So next is RL 25-146. Councilmember Rathmill is still our presenter. Councilmember Ha, Hotchkiss is still going to be running the committee as the acting chair at the moment, and it is in the planning committee. Go ahead, Councilmember Hotchkiss.
So we're talking about RL 25-146, an ordinance to amend the uh, 2025 FY50 CDBG budget to establish a proactive code rehabilitation assistance program. Councilmember Rathmill?
Thank you. I'll make that same noted revision requirement in terms of CDBG, uh, or fiscal year 50. Thank you, Council Harry. Um, so with that same unspent CDBG funding amount in mind, this legislation proposes to establish a proactive code rehabilitation assistance program that would support eligible rental property owners in remediating health and safety deficiencies that are identified on their properties during the proactive rental housing inspection program protocol, uh, that this council is currently considering. So as the city advances affordable housing preservation efforts uh, by adopting and implementing the proactive rental housing inspection program, this, uh, the goal of this fund would be to ensure that we are doing everything we can to prevent the displacement of tenants when uninhabitable conditions are discovered in the buildings that they call home as those compliance inspections roll out. So it's a, it's a um, kind of a, a stopgap safety mechanism to support the inspection rollout. We've heard from many property owners who, um, are concerned with whether or not they would have the capacity to upfront capital or address health and safety deficiencies that are identified in the inspection. Again, because we've not proactively addressed code enforcement. And so many properties have been left to deteriorate in the same way that our affordable housing complexes uh, have been disinvested in and left to deteriorate. So this provides a bit of a buffer in terms of just startup support. So the proactive rental housing inspection program as it's implemented and year by year, we're receiving the program fees related to annual registrations. We're going to build up, I think, funding that can then be dropped into this program to support the remediations in perpetuity. But this, I, I would just kind of view as a startup opportunity. It's an eligible activity under CDBG. Um, I would say right off the bat, and Councilmember Hotchkiss, this would kind of go to your same question in terms of who would be applying. I think right off the bat, there are several criteria for potential applicants uh, that feel responsible. Um, I would say property owners should have submitted a proactive rental housing inspection, like should be up to date on submitting the registration and paying the fee. They should have a demonstrated history of minimum code violations or timely response and remediation when code violations, um, have been notified. Um, I think there are also opportunities to prioritize this assistance. Properties potentially, uh, they're going to have to just by nature of the program and the CDBG funding, um, assistance must be provided to rental housing um, occupants with, uh, low to moderate income. I think we could give priority to rehabilitation of properties that provide occupancy to extremely low and very low-income households. There's the, the opportunity as well to maintain those rental rates for five years post-project completion. This is another one where I would say, I mean, my request would be that it moves to committee for all of the details to be worked out. Um, administratively, there are, I mean, there are options in terms of how the planning department draws down the funding, what kind of assistance method or assistance cap. I mean, there's, there are things to deliberate, but again, eligible activity, and I think with a couple of targeted um, planning committee conversations, we could establish the program.
I'm not going to make a motion to send it to committee, but no, um, my, my question, I, I think just like my initial um, response to this, I, I think it'll be, I'm more excited about this than the last one, just because there the, the code, code enforcement is going to have a direct um, tie to the property owner and say, you have this deficiency. However, there is funding available, so it could just be administered and addressed like right there, um, because there's funding. So that's, and I hope we can find other ways to keep this program funded going forward, because I'm sure there's a lot of deficiencies within homes that need to be addressed, uh, for our residents' health and safety. But that's, that's more of a comment than a question. So does anybody else have any questions on this?
I, I also find this program very interesting. Um, I do think the, there's going to be some administrative trickiness, um, with having essentially small landlords and individual tenants having to do some of this compliance paperwork. Um, that's going to be tricky, I think. Um, but it's something that that's what committee's for and let it go there and let's percolate it.
Anyone else have anything?
Thank you, Rebecca. Again, thank you.
Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.